Okay, good evening. It is Monday, March 23rd, 2020. This is a special meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. If the clerk could please take the roll.
I will be calling the council members that are present in chambers and then those participating remotely. Vice Mayor DeBois?
Here.
Mayor Fine?
Here.
Participating remotely, Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Councilmember Philseth?
Here.
Councilmember Niss?
Here.
Councilmember Koo?
Here.
And Councilmember Tanaka?
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you, Beth. So just a couple of quick comments because this is a new format and meeting style for all of us on council, on staff, and in the community. So just a couple of comments. First of all, five of our members are participating remotely via Zoom, and that is being broadcast live on Mid-Penn and our YouTube channel. And here in council chambers, we can also see it. This is hard to organize. There may be some disruptions or interruptions, so please bear with us as we go through this. When we get to items, I'm going to allow council to speak in alphabetical order, and then I'll do reverse alphabetical order for the next item. However, I may make motions first to speed things up. Given the ongoing emergency, I may enforce time limits, and please be brief. Public speakers are still allowed here in council chambers, but obviously there are some limitations. A limited number of people are allowed in this room, and they're being chaperoned in by staff as needed. Of course, we welcome comments via email as well. Next week, or actually the week after, we really need to be entirely remote, which is now allowed by the state. And in that time, we're going to need to figure out how to engage members of the public, whether it's via Zoom or some other method. So our first item is a special action item. I've asked the city to put it at the top of our agenda for the foreseeable future, an update and discussion of the COVID-19 health emergency and the city's response. I believe the city manager and maybe our OES chief have a couple of comments to kick us off.
Yes, I do. Mr. Mayor, actually, more than a couple of comments. I did want to provide a little more expansive briefing on status and recent steps both by the city and the community at large. So if you bear with me for a few minutes, we're gonna... We were working on getting a couple of slides up, but in the interest of moving forward, I'll just go ahead and present this verbally. We've identified a few key messages that we've been sharing with the public. Slow the spread of the virus by sheltering in place. Stay connected and be kind. We are in this together, so I'd like to use those three themes for a few specific points of information for the council and for the public. First off, slow the spread of the virus by sheltering in place. We certainly realize this is difficult, and our community has struggled with being able to accomplish the various dimensions associated with this. But clearly, this is a strategy to save lives. Tonight's council meeting reflects our next step in this arena with council members participating fully on a remote basis and with video as well as audio and all of the accoutrements associated with that. Just a few points related to our follow-up actions. City itself, as an organization, has taken action to transition our workforce to remote work. And at this point, nearly 90% of our employees, excluding essential onsite employees, are now working remotely. At this point, we've closed virtually all facilities to the public, most recently playgrounds and courts, which have followed our community centers and libraries. Coverly, facility is effectively closed, and we're working to notify tenants of access limitations for individual access that may be necessary. The Baylands and foothills parks are also seeing increased crowds, as has been observed in various parts of the Bay Area. So our staff is now focusing on signage and looking at access limitations. In fact, likely tomorrow to implement at foothills restrictions at the restrooms as well as water fountains as a means of reducing the duration of stays, as well as other limitations. We are protecting our ability to respond to emergencies. Both police and fire have revised response protocols in order to reduce the potential for exposure to our first responders while also protecting lives of those they are responding to. We've established procedures for isolation of any suspected exposure involving our first responders. And testing, as we've heard on a number of fronts, continues to be a struggle in an area that requires additional work, but we are working to improve the availability and access to those tests for our first responders. Our Emergency Operations Center is now activated, now using the National Incident Management System Operating Framework, or NIMS as it's known, in order to expedite decision-making and coordination among our departments and really representing a significant organizational infrastructure that has moved into place in order to monitor expenses and maximize the city's opportunity for reimbursement should that present itself. This has involved setting up new payroll, tracking systems, and access numbers or code numbers, as well as a number of administrative steps. With respect to the economic and budgetary impact of our ongoing efforts, later on your agenda tonight, there is a heads-up to council, so to speak, on how we are putting together the proposed budget that you will see later in April. There will really be no change to the annual process for the budget. We are simply giving you a sense of the streamlined approach that will be reflected in the recommended budget that you'll see again at the end of the month in April. Staff will then review the process or the proposed budget with the Finance Committee in May, prior to returning to the full council in June for your consideration and action. With the very limited capacity of the organization during this emergency currently focused on our response, the difference in prior years is basically setting the expectation that the city manager's proposed operating and capital budgets will not advance any discretionary proposals and will not include the normal write-ups and workload measure reporting. As data becomes available and the financial implications of the current emergency come into focus, the city council and the Finance Committee will have the opportunity and will be provided updates using information available through this process. We do expect that at the May Finance Committee meeting, staff will have updated recommendations based on circumstances and implications that are clear at that point in time. Through this briefing, I do want to note a few anecdotes that reflect just a little color of the human dimension of the work that is ongoing. First is with respect to our operations and our first responders. The term PPE has certainly become a household word, and just like to note that while this has certainly been an area of great public discussion as it relates to our household or, excuse me, healthcare worker needs, perhaps less visible are the needs of our first responders. I would like to acknowledge that our fire department has received a donation of 195 masks from the Palo Alto Chinese-American Community Group. Their donation to Palo Alto Fire Department is just one example of donations that this group is making, really demonstrating their spirit of community service. Next, or actually still under the big heading of slowing the spread of the virus, a little more color in terms of some of the actions the city has been taking and is ongoing. First, as reflected earlier, the city itself as an organization is adhering to the state and county shelter in place order. We are providing community awareness and guidance and resources, really at an unprecedented level, continuing our public communications. As the council knows, and hopefully many, in fact, I know many of the community members know, we've launched our Community Support Call Center, 650-272-3181, with over 29 call center agents, call takers, and five second-level research librarians supporting this initiative. Really an extraordinary redeployment and demonstration by our community services, library, and IT staff that have pulled this together over the course of just a few days. A few other actions taken by the city: we've suspended utility shut-offs, and I've also asked our emergency services volunteers to assist with outreach, additional sets of eyes and ears for the police department, and neighborhood support, checking in on neighbors such as those that are living alone. We are continuing to focus on the highest priority community needs, and we are adapting our routine business, such as noted by many employees working in different capacities in support of the Emergency Operations Center or the Community Support Call Center. We have other staff working from home, experiencing some of the same challenges that families, parents are experiencing in working from home while their kids are now at home, either studying from home in distance learning or more of a childcare situation. And meanwhile, staff is continuing to work on further contingency planning, given that our preparation for other emergencies, whether they be earthquakes or the like, does not stop, and that is continuing. And perhaps Chief Duker will want to make reference to that in his comments in a moment. So finally, just again, just really want to, under this category of the city's own operations, give a shout-out to our library, community service, and IT staff with the commitment that they've had in jumping into this call center endeavor that has really been an important strategy to take some of the pressure off of our 911 dispatch, which was receiving an increasing number of calls as the information and questions were coming up from the community following the county's order and even before that came into play. So it's been a really valuable resource for us not only to share information, but also to take some of the pressure off 911 to ensure that that's available for true emergencies. The camaraderie that's been displayed by the staff that have been involved with our community call center has really been inspiring, and the questions have raised from COVID symptoms to complaints about dogs off-leash and, in fact, a winery wanting to donate wine. Not exactly sure what that happened with that request, but I'm sure it was dealt with appropriately. And it's just a demonstration of our staff demonstrating their professionalism and compassion in dealing with the requests. I know that our community members and reports that we have been receiving are really pleased that the call center has been helping with information. Second theme, being connected. The city's, again, unprecedented level of communication, reflecting both with our community and two-way communication now, as well as with our sister agencies, the County of Santa Clara Public Health Department, who is the lead agency in responding to this emergency, as well as ongoing communications with other agencies, including the county proper, as well as our neighboring cities. We are recognizing that we are in an extended period of emergency. We've also established ongoing linkages with several partners, with the Citizens Core Council that others, I'm sure, will comment on soon, as well as with our nonprofit partners and local business support that I believe we've really stepped up, both directly with businesses as well as working with the Chamber of Commerce. Another example of our staying connected and the benefits here has been with our Downtown Streets team. We understood that they needed volunteers for their food closet, so we put out the call through our own channels and our city's website with Downtown Streets, as well as a number of other nonprofits now been posted on our webpage. And Downtown Streets specifically has reported that received 10 calls from people wanting to volunteer to assist with their food closet. So a really good indication of both the support provided by the community as well as the effectiveness of our communication channel. And then finally, third theme, being kind, that we are in this together. This is ultimately really the reinforcing, the most important perhaps role that the city can play in demonstrating both through our own actions and our communication and the opportunities that are presented with city as convener. We are encouraging the city to obviously stay calm, to stay up to date on the situation by following our website, as well as signing up for our daily reports. With respect to our own workforce, we are maintaining communication with our workforce, both directly from my office as well as through the departments, keeping the core work of the city proceeding to the extent that we can and to the extent possible through this remote work environment and under the circumstances. For essential workers, we've now established a system for allowing hotel stays at the city expense for essential workers during their nights before and after their work shifts, and also working with the County Office of Education on establishing pop-up childcare, as the Office of Education has taken the initiative to be lead on putting opportunities and support together like that, both for first responders as well as healthcare workers. Then, in terms of some of the reactions that we've had in interaction with community, we do understand that there has been some concerns raised about the closure of our facilities, whether they be the tennis courts or pickleball courts, farmers' markets and management of distancing in, during the farmers' markets operations. Also received some feedback around ongoing construction and interest in questions around residential construction that has been proceeding. And so both through our call center emails and other methods of communication, we've been responding to those questions and concerns that have been raised. I think we would just want to acknowledge that the city is doing our best to work appropriately with the orders and in compliance with the orders from both the county and the state, and ultimately recognize that these orders are all focused around slowing the spread while also recognizing that we are, the city, working in partnership with the county and state agencies in order to ensure that we're being consistent in application. And so simply respect the community's feedback and also request their patience and support as we work through these challenging times. So finally, in terms of our public messaging, again, it's staying connected with volunteers and staying connected virtually, volunteering and checking in on your neighbors, that we are having contingency plans of network interruption potentially that we are now tracking, as we've seen quite a bit of network reports today, and so we're certainly following that. And then finally, that our focus on flattening the curve will need to rely on our personal behaviors as individuals and as a community in order to address concerns that folks have been reporting in what they've been observing at our public spaces. So part of our messaging going forward being such that if it's crowded and members of the community are concerned about the crowds, they can take some action and find another place to find their exercise and help us reduce the density at any one of these locations. So I'll end with one last, or maybe a couple of anecdotes. First, again, just really expressing pride in the staff work that has been happening. Couple of examples. One being that the Arts Center and Children's Theater staff have been taking the initiative to provide online program to, online programming, excuse me, to ensure that residents have access to our programs while shelter in place is in effect. Then the final anecdote being a bit of a tongue-in-cheek one, that since last Tuesday, we have not been issuing citations, parking citations for residential permit or time-related parking violations. And we have heard some concerns about tickets that might have been issued on Monday, the 16th, the first weekday of the county order. So perhaps in the spirit of we're all in it together, unless the council objects, I will authorize staff to avoid time-restriction citations that were issued on the prior Monday. So with that, that concludes my comments, and perhaps turn it over to Chief Duker for any comments he'd like to add.
Great. Thank you, City Manager Chikata, and good evening, Mayor Fine and honorable virtual city council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I'll keep my comments short because I know there are a number of questions pending, but I do want to echo what Mr. Chikata laid out on the perspective of staff. Our mission has been to make sure that we're doing the most good for the most people as efficiently as possible. Those of you who have been through our Emergency Services Volunteer Training will realize I just recycled that. That is our, one of our key teaching topics. And it's really as we move into the second week of a very drastically changed operating environment, not only for the city but for the world, this is a question of us being able to pace ourselves, be able to keep on top of things that we don't control, that sometimes unfortunately we, the city government, unfortunately find out about the same time as the general public, and how do we react to that most effectively? I do want to call out two things that we're planning for, for contingencies. One is, of course, the massive increase in hospital resources, not only here in the immediate mid-peninsula, but throughout the state of California. For those who haven't been tracking, there's plenty in the media about this, but a U.S. Navy hospital ship is, was originally going to go to Washington State, is now going to go to Los Angeles Harbor. And for those who are wondering, why don't we have one here? We have, we haven't yet dredged out the Palo Alto Yacht Harbor to accommodate that. That was a little humor. Those kinds of resources are actually deliberately meant to not be for coronavirus. They are meant instead to offload other cases that would otherwise be not treated because of the impending surge. So I'm going to pivot and kind of talk a little bit about local resources that are coming online, and by local, I mean the greater Bay Area. The City of Hayward this morning activated a drive-through triage center of pretty large scale, and we are tracking that from our staff to see what lessons might be learned from their operation. Sometime later this week, Stanford will be activating an expanded drive-through testing site on their campus. There's an existing one now adjacent to the Stanford Shopping Center, Stanford Medical Center complex. So obviously, we, the city, are very much involved with that. And then there are a number of other testing sites that are, that have gone live in both Santa Clara County and are about to in San Mateo County. Some of those, we don't have the details yet, but obviously it's a regional response, not a city response to a public health emergency, and we will have further updates for council and the public as those things unfold. So the other bit I want to talk about is in the spirit of contingency planning. Right now, we kind of have two extremes. One is the obvious harm that's been done to our economy and the way of life that we have right now, and the other one is when and how do we return to normalcy? But in between those two, it's our job now, especially in the Emergency Operations Center, to think about what are the possible contingencies? We've talked about duration. We've talked about how long will these health orders be in effect? What do we do if they're extended? The interrelationship between the governor's orders, the respective county orders, and pending federal orders that are likely and predictably to come, on the one hand. And then there are the second-order contingencies that we also need to plan for. Many of us experience interruptions to our cellphone connectivity. A few of us were on a conference call early this morning and had difficulty dialing in, not because the conference call was overloaded, but because the cellphone networks were overloaded. And so that is one of several contingencies. So since we're being broadcast live on KZSU 90.1 FM, I do want explicitly shout out that that is part of our community backup. And while there still isn't internet, make sure you look at our emergency operations plan on citypalto.org-publicsafety and take a look at the less high-tech means that we might use, we might have to use, to inform the public. So that is the end of my prepared remarks, and I'll turn it back to Ed or the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Chief. Just a quick check, can my colleagues hear me okay? Just give me a thumbs up? Okay, great. So a couple of quick comments, and then I'll pass it to you all. A few requests of the public and a couple of updates that I've seen on my end. So first requests, it's really important that the public practice social distancing as we're doing here and as you see many of your friends and colleagues doing. Continue increased hygiene. I've also seen increased calls for folks to please donate blood. Apparently, some of the hospitals are running low on certain blood types, so that's important as well. Continue to cancel all nonessential travel and medical procedures. Donations are being accepted at all of our local hospitals. Please check out Lucille Packard, Stanford Hospital, and Pampf. They have guidelines about how you may donate personal protective equipment. It must be in the original packaging. I've also been speaking over the weekend with flexport.org, a logistics and shipping startup, and they are accepting donations to source and deliver medical supply shipments here in the Bay Area, including potentially to our hospitals. So flexport.org, you can check that out. The city manager mentioned the call line, which I'll just mention, is 650-272-3181, and I really want to thank staff for standing that up in a few days. I think it's been an enormous resource. The city manager also mentioned be kind. I would encourage us all to be kind and polite. I've already seen a few emails and interactions that are really not representative of our community, and we all need to do better there. On volunteering, we have a very volunteer-savvy and interested community that's a great asset. It can also become a burden, though, if it's misdirected and if we don't do it in a well-planned way. So I do encourage folks in the community to take the initiative, to take ownership of things that they see need to be done in their community, on their block, in their neighborhood. Please do work with your neighbors, connect with the local business, support each other. But please be careful about adding to the city and other agencies already full plate. A few quick updates, and then I'll hand it off to you all. The county is increasing ICU beds and is also recruiting retired healthcare personnel. If you know folks in that field, you may refer them to the county. A federal medical station with 250 beds has been set up at the Santa Clara County Convention Center. I've received a number of inquiries about where are we seeing coronavirus infections, where in Palo Alto, across which communities in the county. County public health is not releasing that information for various reasons, nor about hotspots across the county. Last week, a number of mayors across the Santa Clara County set up an organization called Silicon Valley Strong. It's a food program that is beginning to help seniors and limited-mobility people get food and deliveries and water. You can also, you can donate on their website, just look up Silicon Valley Strong, or support charities like Second Harvest Food Bank and Catholic Charities. The city manager mentioned some of the steps he and the organization are taking to take care of our employees. The city does have an employee sickness plan in place. Many city hall workers are remote, and as the manager mentioned, hotel rooms have been reserved for essential workers as needed. A few items I've heard from the community: parking tickets suspended, except in the most egregious cases. You may still see parking meter personnel going around town as they are acting as eyes and ears for our public safety organizations. Utility rate relief has been provided for residential and commercial customers. I believe there's more on the city's website. The California Avenue's farmer's market, I received a lot of feedback about this yesterday. Just so folks understand, it is considered an essential grocery under the county and the governor's list of exceptions. That said, staff is currently working with the leadership of the farmer's market to figure out how do we practice better social distancing there. The chief mentioned the Citizens Core Council. We are meeting twice per week. That includes groups, including the university, both hospitals, Pampf, PAUSD, our emergency service volunteers, police, fire, emergency services, the shopping center, the Chamber of Commerce, Palo Alto Child Care, and we'll also be working with the faith community in Palo Alto to keep everyone informed and connected. Small business and nonprofit support. The city and Chamber of Commerce are coordinating on that. The city website and the weekly also have a good list of local businesses that you can continue to support with delivery and food pickups, and the chamber has some info on small business loans. I think those are most of my comments for the moment. As some may remember, last week, I did ask my fellow council members to each take a kind of priority area, and so I'm hoping with these sessions, we can each kind of report on what we've seen, what we've heard in that priority area, but also in general, what you're hearing in the community, what questions you have for the city staff or for ourselves here on council. And so just a reminder, we'll go in alphabetical order. So Councilmember Cormac, dialing in from, it looks like, Beronda Lake. I think you're going to be first.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Can everybody hear me? Great, okay. Huge thanks to staff. It's just unimaginable to think about where we were a week ago and where we are today. And I'm going to work through the order that the city manager used: stay home, stay connected, and be kind. I was assigned communications last week by the mayor, and I thank you again, Mayor, for identifying ways that each of us can help. In terms of staying healthy at home, I just want to reiterate that the county's FAQs about the shelter-in-place order are really the best place to go, and they're being updated routinely. That link is available on the city's coronavirus webpage. I know there are a lot of rules, and it concerns people, but I think so far, everything that I see, people are doing an exceptional job. I want to take a moment to remind people, we've talked a lot about people who are older and people who have underlying conditions, but I just want to make that a little bit more specific. We have kids with cystic fibrosis in this community. We have kids with heart conditions, and so I've only heard one person say this is just the flu. It's a lot more than the flu. So just a reminder that we're doing this for everybody. In terms of staying connected, I wonder if staff would be able to put back up the stay-informed slide that had the three options there? I cannot, you know, commend our communications department enough for the work that they've done. The webpage is updated. The webpage is updated constantly. The newsletter that goes out every day has accurate information, and the call center really has been extraordinary. I think it might be the one after this, the slide after this. Perfect, there we go. Thank you so much. So I just want to echo what the city manager said in terms of that. The constant updates lead me to believe that our staff hasn't really had much sleep. I'm just going to keep it short, because I know we have a lot of other things to talk about tonight. One concern I did hear yesterday was about services, religious services, who met on Sunday. I think that hasn't yet been entirely clarified, so I know staff is taking a look at that. And then I just want to end with a quote from Cinderella's mother, which I think is very relevant at this time, which is, "Have courage and be kind."
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Next is Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for all the updates, and thanks to the tech staff for getting the remote teleconferencing meeting running tonight. Quite impressive. So I've been focusing on schools, childcare, as well as our religious community. On the school front, the school started what they're calling Phase Two of their flexible learning this week, which teachers are basically giving kids about three hours of work a week per class, which is roughly the same as the amount of class time that they had before. And, you know, the district is watching what other school districts are doing, other states. Their plan is to do this Phase Two this week, next week, go on spring break, and then hopefully they'll have some kind of distance learning solution in place when they come back from spring break. They are dealing with issues of equity and how to deal with kids who have learning disabilities, and so they're hoping to work all that out. At this point, you know, one of the things the city has is fiber, internet fiber. At this point, the school district doesn't know of any kids that don't have access to network. I think they are providing hotspots, and if any student does need access, they can contact support@pausd.org via email. They also are delivering food to children. The PTA is kind of self-organized. They're primarily delivering about 120 meals a day to Buena Vista at this point. But otherwise, this school district seems like they've got things under control. They didn't really have any specific requests to the city at this point. On the faith community front, I think basically they're working to establish kind of a chain of communication. Definitely, a lot of people are interested in helping out in some way. So if there do arise needs for food distribution, I think they're interested in helping in that area, identifying any families in crisis, as potentially people lose their jobs. And even now, I think food pantries are looking for donations. On the childcare front, I've been asking around if anybody really hears of a need. I'm not hearing a strong need at the moment. There has been in East Palo Alto, and there have been some emergency child cares, I think, that have popped up in East Palo Alto. I do think we need to get in on our contingency planning, though, particularly if people end up going to the hospital and need some kind of babysitting or coverage. And then the last thing I just wanted to say is, please, you know, try to support the local businesses. Most of them are set up for delivery, but there's not a lot of people necessarily utilizing them at the moment. We're lucky to have two newspapers, subscribe to your local newspaper, and really kind of look for those businesses that are doing either pickup or takeout. I think it's important that we support them during this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think we've got... bleed over or something, but let's just power through. Councilmember Phil Seth, I think you're up next.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Just hold on for one second. Are we okay? All right, Councilmember Phil Seth, if you would proceed, please.
I think everyone's muted now. So you guys can unmute it, we can't hear.
Eric looks... Councilmember Phil Seth, are you there? Did we mute everyone?
Eric, can you see something now?
No, I can see Adrian's lips moving, but...
Okay. If everyone except Eric could please mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Eric.
Adrian's A&amp;E nodding? Yeah, okay. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my task was to go check in and take the pulse of what's going on with the business community. And so last week, I pinged a handful of local businesses of various sizes. And so not super organized here, but not a lot of surprises. Most of the ones that I talked to foresee a little, a few weeks of cushion, but significant concern if this goes on for many weeks or months. I think pretty much everybody really is following the shelter order. Most of the retail businesses are completely shut down, although, for example, a couple of the bicycle shops are still taking service work. Shopping Center is pretty much a ghost town. Restaurants, I'll get to in a second. Actually, the only retail shop that I thought was really open for businesses usual was the Raw Smoke Shop on Cal F. Beyond that, I think pretty much everybody is following the shelter order. Not a lot of requests for city action, other than communication, which I think we're doing a good job at. Appreciation that the city is thinking about them. One of the things, let's see, a couple of other things. One of the things that we're going to take up this evening is addiction moratorium for both residential and small businesses. I didn't see a lot of fear of imminent small business addiction, although, the general sentiment was, you know, landlords are not likely to evict a good tenant in this climate. But everybody would appreciate some kind of rent relief if that were forthcoming. Let me do a few notes here. Palo Alto Bikes, again, some cushion for the next several weeks, but if it goes on a long time, things could be really grim. Appreciate the city worrying about our businesses. Some of the professional firms downtown are fine, quote-unquote, fine. Everybody's working from home doing what we're doing. Tesla, as of a week ago, was still, has still some manufacturing going on in Fremont, but that may have changed things then. Let's see, some of the, a couple of the cafes and bakeries. One of the things that was that businesses, the restaurant businesses, that had an existing significant takeout business, by and large, that has continued on the ones that I talked... Oh, that's interesting. There we go. Those that had existing takeout businesses have, by and large, continued without significant impact, at least a couple. Those without existing takeout businesses were trying it, but nervous. Also, some suggestion that very small businesses with only a couple of employees might weather the storm just because they can batten down the hatches, but that larger ones, quote-unquote, restaurants with space for 100 people, are likely to face more difficult circumstances just because of the higher overhead costs. Let's see, dooby-doo-doo. One of them, Dan Gordon's, everybody's sent home except for two people, supporting takeout business. Very tough on staff. Everybody's been directed to unemployment and so forth. One of the observations from Research Park is that some of the larger businesses may actually have various forms of kind of business disruption insurance, which may provide some Research Park's request to the city is a postponed business hack. Let's see, a couple others, takeout businesses. Retail businesses that are closed, somebody told me, please remind everybody that retail businesses that are closed will still do business online, and even the ones that don't have an online presence will still do business by inquiry. So people should be aware of that. Oh, one other thing was, not a lot of interest in, at this time anyway, of Small Business Association administration.
You are unmuted.
One person said, you know, the problem with those is you've got to pay them back. On the other hand, ask me in a month if this keeps up. By and large, hunkered in, I think people appreciate that the city's thinking about them, so if you stop in and say hello and see how things are going, I think people will really appreciate that. Lot of solidarity out there, you know, we all got to get this done.
Thank you, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thanks. Can you hear me, Adrian?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everyone. It's a very interesting way to see each other and staff, and thanks, staff, so much for what you're doing. Ed, I don't know if you're sleeping, and I don't know if anyone else is, but we really appreciate what you're doing. It's incredible. So my assignment was essentially public health and also weaving in the seniors. Many people have asked about what is going on with the health in the community, and you probably know that under the HIPAA rules, the county can't release that. So there is some anecdotal evidence, the Post has come out with who they think has become ill, but it's difficult to really tell where our county is, except you know that the county puts out the stats every day, and I'm sure you've seen those on a regular basis. A couple of things that are far more pedestrian than the kinds of things the rest of you have discussed, but I noticed many people are asking, how can they get testing? And earlier, you heard one of the chiefs say, here's how you get testing and where testing is being done. However, the truth of all is, is that before you can get tested, you have to have the symptoms. You also have to have doctor's orders. The symptoms, as I see them, are pretty straightforward. You'll have a dry cough, you'll probably be fatigued, you'll be short of breath, and definitely, you'll have a fever. We only know of one person so far who has had it and stayed home, and another actually is hospitalized. But those, in order to have a test, in order to have an order from your doctor, it's essential that you have those symptoms before it happens. And I'd be delighted if somebody said that that's not the case. It's difficult to get the testing, even though both Stanford and the other healthcare facilities in our area are doing the best they can. It still is going to be a while before testing is easy, and you can sit in your car and have that done at the same time. To add to that, you also have heard a great deal about sheltering in place and discussions about what happens if you're out and people are jostling and getting too close together. And I don't know whether others would agree, but I think, having watched what went on on the dish this morning, I was very impressed. People are reinforcing it with each other. And perhaps it's not always appreciated, but I notice frequently, people were saying, you're not six feet apart, or single file, or whatever it might be. And while I think it does offend some people, I notice that people really comply, and pretty quickly. So I think that, as city leaders, it's our job to say something when we see groups that are congregating, kindly, but say something straightforwardly. I'm from Massachusetts, and I happen to be talking to my sister today, and their stats are out. If you look at mass.gov, one of the interesting aspects is they're noticing that this particular virus, particular strain, is affecting people at all ages, and not as much in an older generation as they had said was happening in Wuhan. I'm sure you've read a lot about South Korea, you've read a lot about what's happening in Hong Kong and so forth. I'm hoping, I don't know that we can hope for this realistically, but it would be great to think that we might have a break by the end of April or early May. Beyond that, as far as other information, I think you might look online for Stanford's Everyday COVID Report, which is very helpful, as is ours, and many of you have spoken about our own webpage. I think we're in really difficult times. I don't know about the rest of you. I always feel like I'm in maybe a science fiction movie, and I'm very hopeful that I'll wake up and it'll be over. It's difficult being sheltered in place. I think you're all noticing that. And it takes some real concentration for us to think about how we can do this and still be productive and actually enjoy this time. So that's my report, and thank you, Adrian, for giving us each assignment. It's given me a chance to be in touch with all of our healthcare agencies that are close by, as well as in Santa Fe. And I think we're doing a good job. We could probably do more as far as being able to keep people from congregating. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, Councilmember Koo.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you so much for the tremendous job that staff has been doing in making sure that our communications is very thorough, as well as being ready for almost anything that comes along. My task was to keep emergency preparedness and be in communication and report back about what the emergency response is like. I think staff has already given a lot of that, from Chief Duker and from Managers Cicada, so I won't repeat most of those. But I will say that, within the community, the emergency services volunteer has stepped up last week. A lot of it was uncertainty on what to do, but they have stepped up and are out and about dropping off leaflets and communications means on where to find information. Also, they've left numbers, their phone numbers and contact information, so anybody who is in need can actually make a phone call or communicate with them so that they can satisfy their needs. And everything that I'm hearing from the community is that there is a lot of, there are people that are very anxious and very fearful. A lot is because they're at home, and, you know, the news has, if they're watching the news, and it just keeps going on and on about the same thing, and it really helps cause them to just be focused on that matter. So reaching out to people on your contact list and making a phone call and helping, talking with them, is one way of relieving that kind of fear and anxiety. I'm also working with Dr. Rosenthal here in Palo Alto, who is a member of the Santa Clara County Association of Psychologists. She's actually reaching out to her colleagues in order to put together a list. She's compiling it as we speak so that they can volunteer to take calls to help anybody who is in stress. Also, Magical Bridge has now secured concerts during lunch hours, usually between 1:00 and, I'm sorry, between 12:00 and 1:00, in order to help some relief with children that are at home. And just on Saturday, they had Nancy Cassidy come on. It was very enjoyable. Otherwise... Otherwise, I think, um, I also wanna thank, uh, Councilmember Ness for iterating the county policy pertaining the release of information, uh, where there are, in terms of how many cases and where, because county has that policy. And besides that, I think that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. And last but not least, Councilmember Tanaka.
Okay, um, so first of all, me, again, thanks staff for all your work on this. Thank you for my, my fellow councilmembers for, uh, your work in all your different areas. And of course, the community, I think the community's been doing a lot. A lot of people have been volunteering to try to help others, and I think that's amazing for our community, and I really appreciate everyone's work on this. And I think by pulling together, we're allowed to get through this. So I think it's, um, I think it's, I'm really glad to see everyone, uh, working hard on this. My priority area is literally what you guys are seeing now, is trying to get us all online. So I think right now we are. So, um, I'm, I'm just about done with the assignment that Adrian gave me. The one part that is not done is, um, I want to get the public enabled to call into Zoom so that they can also give some comment. Because I know that some, um, you know, with email, you can only get so much through that way, um, but I think it'd be much better if, uh, the public could also zoom in and give their public testimony that way as well, versus just email or having to go to, uh, City Hall. So I hope to work with staff, uh, to do this, uh, next week, but, uh, you know, I, I know staff, I personally have to push staff pretty hard on this, but you guys came through, so thank you guys for making this happen. I think so far, it's, it's going pretty well. Uh, so, a couple comments to what, um, the city managers report. One is, um, you know, I, I do think we have to make sure that the community is safe, but I do wonder about closing some things like tennis courts, where people are trying to exercise, whether that's, um, the right thing to do. I don't know, I mean, perhaps we have to talk to some medical experts, but I, I do know that, um, uh, we gotta kinda weigh the pros and cons. Um, and so, tennis courts, tennis seems like a more of a distant type of sport, so to me it sounds a little bit better. Um, one other issue I heard, and, and just wanted to make a plug for the Slack group that we set up on, um, I guess the Palo Alto community, is, um, there are some people talking about, they were trying to call utilities for, um, I think, a sewer that was overflowed. So I think there, I think they tried calling in, but nothing's happening, or that they're not able to get through the city. So I think that's something that, um, maybe the city manager could look at. But I think, um, I, I think the really nice thing that's been happening is that we have a Slack group, which I think everyone on council has joined, and it really allows us to do a two-way conversation with the community. So I think, I want, wanna encourage the community to join it. Uh, we should probably put a link of this on our agenda on the website so that more people know where it is. Uh, but I think it's a great way for us to, um, communicate, when we can't necessarily do this in person. So, uh, Councilmember Phil Seth, thank you for your report on the businesses. I, I've also talked to quite a few myself. A lot of them are really suffering, a lot of them are, are doing the right thing by paying their employees, but, you know, they can only do that for so long. And so they are, they're definitely on edge, and there's definitely a lot of concern. Uh, so I, I think we, as a city, should start thinking about, um, is there a stimulus plan that we could put in place so that we make this economic recovery more of a, what they call a V shape, so it kinda bounces right back, versus a long drawn-out recovery? Because, um, this is, this is gonna be painful for everyone. Um, I heard on the news today that something like one out of five families have been affected with layoffs in the United States, which seems really high to me. I'm not sure if it's true, but it's, if it's true, it's very, very concerning. I think that, one thing that I'd like to really hear from the city manager is, uh, how much are our revenues down? I know that our sales taxes are down, I know that our hotel taxes are down, um, and so, uh, I guess to me, that's, it'd be really good to know. I know that maybe you don't have those numbers at hand, but if you could get those, that would be really important. Because I, you know, right now, we have a budget civilization reserve, which is really meant for times like this, and we have other reserves, I mean, for times of crisis, and we are certainly in a times of crisis. But we have to think about, like, with the current, um, plan, um, how, how long can we continue, uh, like, because I, I do think that, um, given, and I, I think, you know, not enforcing the parking or, or deferring some of the parking fees makes a lot of sense, as well as deferring the utilities or fees in general, because we're trying to help the community. So I think, I think acting as a buffer, I think is, is the right thing to do. But I want to make sure we have the funds to do that. And so we should, we should start thinking about, how do we repert- repertize what we're doing and the fund, the funds that we're spending? So that we, instead of spending money on parking enforcement, we spend it on perhaps, uh, you know, deferring or waiving some of the fees that we have, so that the impact on our community, on our residents, on our businesses, is a lot less than it would be otherwise. Albeit, I realize some of the stuff is small, but, um, talking to some of the businesses, people are really, really scared, and even the people, even residents are really scared. So I think it's important for us to kinda be that foundation, try to be that buffer for people during times like this. So, um, but yeah, so that's, that's my, uh, report out, um, but thank you guys for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. I know, um, over the coming weeks, we'll certainly get a lot more updates on some of the revenue sources. I think hotel taxes, monthly sales taxes, every six months or so, so some may be kind of trailing. I just have a, I, I wanna thank all of you remotely and Vice Mayor here for those updates. Um, do wanna just offer, like, you know, as, as we go through this, let's figure out what's the most useful, uh, use of our time for this hour. And any questions you all have, absolutely welcome. A few questions I have, so one is, I've, I've heard in a couple communities that restaurants that may be closed can give away their gro- can give away their stock in a grocery store like setting. Is that anything we've seen in Palo Alto, or are, is there any way we could enable that, or would we prohibit it? I'm just wondering, it's something I've seen in a few other places.
I have not heard that report, so certainly, um, Ken may wanna comment on it, but I think that would be something new.
Sure, I've, I've seen a few cases in news media where they've converted from a restaurant to a grocery store. We could ask Molly Stump whether she believes that's legitimate or not, but if they're, if they're not operating as a sit-down dining, really takeout is allowed anyhow. So I know a number of them have wound down their business by selling their inventory. I haven't heard about donations, other than, as you alluded to, Silicon Valley Strong.
Okay. And then, the issue of, of parks, the dish, um, I've mentioned a few of you, I drove out to the Baylands this past weekend, and it was, it was, it was pretty swamped, um, actually. And I just saw the governor closed, uh, parks and beaches in about five counties, not including Santa Clara. Marin closed theirs a day or two ago. And I'm wondering, how, how do we here make that decision? Obviously, you know, we do want recreational opportunities and fresh air for our residents and community. But I heard the city manager say we're closing playgrounds, and, and how would we make that decision of potentially closing parks?
Just for clarification, I think the report I saw was the governor closing parking lots at parks, not necessarily the parks themselves. So I think those are among the management strategies in order to reduce the access and, and use that as a metering, uh, method. And that's, um, the underlying philosophy behind the restroom closure, as I mentioned. And, uh, so that would certainly be an incremental step. If that's unsuccessful in terms of managing the crowd, then, uh, closure would presumably be the next step, unless we can come up with any other strategies in between.
Okay, thank you. And then just one last question, and, and maybe a silly one. You know, it seems like we're not yet, uh, at capacity in terms of the state's water resources, and somebody asked me over the weekend, and I thought it was an interesting question. Should we be at all worried about water restrictions over the next few months? And...
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please.
Thank you. Um, as the boss, the rest, sorry, I'm hearing a lot of, Adrian, can you, yeah, perfect, thank you. Um, as the Bosque Rep, Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency, we just received an update on that this afternoon. Happy to share that. Um, our system's storage is actually still quite high at 84%, so these are the reservoirs, that includes Hetch Hetchy and a few others. Um, the recent storms have been helpful, and they anticipate storms out for the next couple of weeks. The most important thing is the deliveries in this area, the SFPUC area, have been down significantly. Deliveries, meaning how much water have we been using. And the reason is, the non-residential sectors have decreased. So, um, I think that's, on balance, I would say, good news, in terms of water, for the moment.
Great, thank, thank you, Councilmember Cormac, that was really helpful. Vice Mayor, and then if anybody else wants to, maybe just, uh, mention in the chat if you have another question. Vice Mayor.
So again, I, that's my understanding right now, is that, you know, people can go out and exercise as long as you maintain distance. I think we've done some great things with, like, our library, where people can check out books online and then go pick up. So is staff thinking about potentially, I know, I know right now you're, you're worried about people gathering too many people, but other services, we might be able to provide in a scheduled way or metered way. You know, we did get questions about tennis courts, which again, if, if people aren't gathering and they're actually on the opposite sides of the net, it's, it seems like it would, would be a nice way for people to exercise. Obviously, it's kind of low down on the priority list compared to basic safety and health, but, uh, does staff at all have cycles to think about, things like that?
Perhaps just a commentary on the tennis, and Kristen O'Kane, our Director of Community Service, might wanna comment more broadly on other, uh, facilities. The interesting, um, exchange related to tennis, we actually had the District Attorney's Office weigh in on that topic and reinforce directly to the resident that was asking that that was not a permissible, uh, activity, it was considered a gathering. There have also been some, uh, news report along, call it, um, the scientific line questioning the wisdom of the ball itself as, as another transmission source between the players.
Not so much tennis, but even like parks or things where we're...
Sure, sure. At that point, let me ask Kristen to chime in. See if we can handle that handoff. Perhaps not. Yeah, it looks like she's having difficulty getting through.
Hi, this is Kristen, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, um, thank you, um, Ed and councilmembers. Um, we're really trying to focus on virtual programming so that we can avoid having people together in one space. Um, as Ed mentioned, the tennis courts, it, and the pickleball courts are considered a gathering space. There's also concern with people touching the same tennis balls or the same equipment, so that's part of the, the concern there. With respect to having activities in parks, again, it's really difficult to maintain that social distancing in any situation, so we're really trying to just focus on the virtual programming right now.
Thank you, thank you both. Um, I see Councilmember Koo has a question. And then Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask Ed a question when he was giving his presentation. Um, you said, you mentioned tracking network reports. Um, can you kinda elaborate a little bit on that for me?
Actually, both, um, Ken Duker and I, uh, mentioned that, that today we were, uh, both experiencing directly, as well as tracking some intermittent, I don't know if we'd call it outage or slowdowns in, uh, the wireless networks. So that's certainly a potential threat for us to, uh, keep an eye on and also prepare for, uh, to the extent that interruption in communications with all of the distance learning and telework that's happening now would certainly be understandably impacting the, uh, availability of the system. So Ken, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, in the, in the spirit of really looking holistically at contingency planning, um, the, the question of water supply was brought up, and unfortunately, the water supply right now is not at risk, and even the drought is probably gonna be more or less okay. However, um, wildfire season is gonna be upon us soon. We've already had a number of significant fires in the state of California before spring even sprung, as it were. Uh, so we do need to keep an eye on all hazards and other contingencies. We, uh, we do not have the luxury of saying, hey, we get a hall pass or a timeout on all these other things. So that's something that we collectively, throughout the state of California, at the Office of Emergency Services in particular, are looking at the things that we're not thinking about, because we're all preoccupied with this topic. So I'm, I'm glad somebody brought up water supply. And telecommunications impact is more direct and more correlated with the heavy use of telecommuting, telework, and distance learning. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Um, another question I had was, is there a plan for, um, homeless individuals?
Sorry? Yes, yes, um, yes, our, our Office of Human Services has been, uh, monitoring and keeping in touch both with our local nonprofits, as well as the county of Santa Clara. They've really been taking the lead in providing, uh, both, uh, ongoing, kind of, communication, but also, uh, equally important, uh, the availability of, uh, accommodations, should it be necessary, uh, for individuals that, uh, become sick. Uh, so they have, uh, really been, uh, the lead agency in trying to maintain and ensure that we have, uh, some capacity available should that, uh, contingency be necessary.
So, would you be able to share which agencies?
It's really the, Santa Clara County, um, I'm forgetting the name of the office, but the county executive, uh, executive officer has, uh, mentioned it a few times, uh, in terms of how they are, uh, both, uh, providing ongoing, uh, reporting, as well as, uh, uh, looking to deploy additional resources that the governor's office has, uh, mentioned is, is coming online. Staff may wanna, uh, add to that, if there are anyone online that, uh, wants to comment. I think...
I'm just one, really wondering, how, how, how are we monitoring? Um, we don't want to move the individual, obviously, if, if, um, you know, they're sheltering in place and, at some place, but how do we know if they're sick or, you know, what their needs would be?
At this point, I know that our Office of Human Services and Community Services, this is Minka, effectively, has been keeping in touch with the Opportunity Center and other organizations, uh, that are providing direct services. Downton Street's team, another organization that we've been keeping in close contact with, and, uh, we've had a, a few, uh, issues that we've just wanted to ensure we're coordinating on. Availability of, uh, wash basins, availability of restroom facilities and the like. Uh, so we've been working together to ensure that that is provided. That's really been the focus at this point.
And then the last question I have...
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I think Kristen O'Kane wants to comment as well.
Oh, great, thank you.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to, um, reiterate what Ed said, that we're having, um, bi-weekly meetings with our, um, nonprofit service providers and putting together what they might need, um, but also what other services they can provide. So this has been a great way for them, I think, one, to feel like they're not alone in this, but two, to share resources. There is an example where, um, one organization said they needed 30 hot meals, um, and another organization said, we're on it, and was able to deliver them 30 hot meals. So it's been a great resource for them. Um, and also for us, just so that we can stay in touch with these organizations and assist them when they need it.
Thank you, Kristen. Last question is, um, my last question is, I understand, and this might be for Molly, I'm not really sure, or maybe for Chief Duker, there was a new governor's executive order that came out yesterday. Was there more, um, orders added to it?
The, the governor has issued quite a few executive order, uh, guidances coming out of the governor's office. Did you have a specific question?
No, I was wondering what was new that was added yesterday? What did he order new yesterday?
Yeah, I, I'm hesitating because I'm really focusing on things that affect city operations, and I didn't pick anything up in that category. Um, otherwise, I can summarize it for you, um, possibly offline after.
Would it be wise to also maybe, um, um, have a summary of, of the, all the executive order and put it on the agenda to, um, kind of brief us on everything and also the community, what he had ordered, besides the most obvious ones?
So the orders are wide-ranging, um, and, um, Chief Duker might... So the orders are wide ranging and Chief Duker might actually have more to add on this with respect to yesterday's order and specifically. But in terms of the things the governor has been doing, they range from giving cities some additional authority or flexibility, but also directing certain statutes of limitations to be suspended or extended, various types of administrative actions that affect state programs and state bodies and, you know, other types of activities that's, that are really outside of our area of authority or responsibility. And so frankly, given the tremendous volume of material, we've really been focusing on the pieces that affect us as, as a city. Chief Duker, did you have anything to add?
Thank you. Yes, to your point, we're filtering this. We actually have stood up a legislative tracking unit within the Emergency Operations Center structure to do precisely that. So out of yesterday's promulgation, there was nothing of direct applicability to our operations here. You're aware of the mobilization of the National Guard that's actually been done, unified across all 50 states and all territories in support of large scale medical operations and humanitarian relief. So there's, there's, there is tracking of that going on, but to Councilmember Koo's question about yesterday, nothing that we need to brief out on today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I saw Councilmember Phil Seth next.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just briefly add on to the mayor's remarks on parks a minute ago. I was out in San Mateo County a little bit over the weekend and San Mateo County parks are open for hiking, but restrooms, picnic areas and food centers were all closed. And I passed by the entrance to Hunter Park on Saturday and it looked like it was severely limiting the number of people that could get in. There was a big line of cars waiting out front to pass through the gates.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think next I had a signal from Councilmember Niss.
You did? Am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Okay. And this is one that I hesitate to bring up because I know, Ed, you have been very clear in discussing it, but that is whether or not the police should be involved when there are situations that we feel are dangerous for a number of reasons. I noticed that San Jose, your former, former employer, is using police and have said very straightforwardly. Do you want to comment again? I did notice that over the weekend, there was a, an incident at the dish and the police did respond to that. So could you comment on what I think is very delicate?
In fact, I'll do one better and ask our police chief Johnson to comment. Let's see if we can get the camera to work at the podium or wherever he's able to go.
Good evening, everyone. If I heard the question correctly, it was a matter of the enforcement on the social distancing and the calls that have been coming in. And right now it, we, we in Palo Alto are still taking an education approach to that. We are responding to some of those complaints, not all of them. We're trying to mitigate those as we can over the phone, but we have deployed officers. The one at the dish was handled by the Stanford Department of Public Safety, not Palo Alto Police Department. But the ones we've done right now, we're strictly trying to educate the residents and community members. What you've heard from San Jose is, is really a warning that we don't want to get into the enforcement of social distancing, but if people don't start complying, we may have to at some point. And again, that's for the city to decide where we're going to go and how, how far we want to take it. So I'm available for questions if there's another one.
Thanks, thanks so much for saying that, though. I think it's important to know that there's backup there if we absolutely need it. So I appreciate that, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief. I don't see any more signals from anyone to speak. Okay. I just want to really thank staff again for all your hard work on this, both in terms of operations, the communications, the messaging and, and a lot of the work that went into actually setting up this meeting here tonight. And thank you all to my colleagues who are remote. This, this is really pretty astounding and good progress, so many, many thanks. We'll do this item again at our meeting in two weeks, I think. But of course, the city will be providing other regular updates. Do go check out the city's website and subscribe to the newsletter. And as always, our lead agency here is County Department of Public Health for this crisis. And with that, I think we will end this item. Thank you all. Okay, but we got a bit more to go through. Next item up is our first action item, the consideration of analysis, public outreach and refined polling and further discussion of potential local business tax ballot measure. And does staff have a brief presentation?
Just perhaps a context for your discussion this evening, as the council knows, perhaps then just for the public, that we've got a base report that presented, had been prepared as typical, a couple of weeks ago, that provided quite a bit of analysis on the next steps related to a business tax development, including preliminary rates under a few different scenarios that the council could consider for a employee based tax structure. Then last week, in what we call the At Places Memo, recognition of recent events, I put out a recommendation that is before you, that is a pivot, again, recognizing the current public health emergency, that would recommend just continuing work on the development of a local tax measure for this November 2020 election, recognizing the schedule and the timing restrictions related to that. And that second recommendation would be that for staff instead, focus our work over the upcoming year on revisions to the existing business registry to accomplish two things. One, to streamline the process to register and really focus on the most important elements of information necessary and to ensure that all businesses are registered and really focus our activities there. And then finally, on a related, but not necessarily linked thread, to direct staff also to return to the council with a new schedule for a railroad grade separation work plan that extends that work beyond what has been currently the schedule for coming back to city council for consideration in May. So those are the elements of the item that's before you.
Thank you, Mr. City. Thank you. I think we have one speaker from the public, Mr. Herb Borak. And you'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Fine, and good evening. I support the recommendation to discontinue work on the ballot measure. And in regard to the grade separation study, I suggest a pause while we give this emergency to run its course and see what reaction business has, especially in the knowledge industry of whether it's a good idea to have their workers commuting to work at a commuter, computer here or to just work from home. And also the extent to which it's necessary to continue such large development in one locality because there may be other types of disruptions like sea level rise and earthquakes. So maybe make more sense to decentralize and the need for the grade separations will go away. Also, the legislature has been making moves to attempt to shift the money from high speed rail to Southern California rail and to something in Northern California. And candidate Brownwick indicated that would be for grade separations. There's a court case now whether the legislature is able to amend the Proposition 1A on its own to define when something has to do with high speed rail, even though the connection is very tenuous. But if they're successful, there's currently a bill in the legislature to shift $4 billion of the remaining approximately $8 billion dollars to Southern California local rail. Of course, it might in some day be connected to high speed rail. And in the same way, an argument would be made to get the votes from this area, that the money could be used for the grade separations and therefore the ballot measure wouldn't be needed. Prior to the council having direction on ballot measure, there were people who wanted to do an initiative of this type to accomplish the same thing. And if they're opposed to the suggestion of the city manager, they should say so now rather than surprising us with an initiative measure later. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to go to the council. And as I mentioned, we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order for this item. So Councilmember Tanaka, you are up first.
So, thank you, City Manager, for your revised recommendation. I think it makes a lot of sense. We're going through an economic collapse that we haven't seen maybe since the Great Depression. So I think this is the right direction. Economists are saying that it might take us several years for this to work itself out. I hope not. I hope it's a lot quicker. And I think whether it's long or, or whether it takes a long time or it's going to be short, I think it's largely going to be driven by what the government does, right? What we as a city do, what the federal government does, state government, county government does in terms of trying to help revive the economy. So as I mentioned earlier, I heard some stats that went out by families has been seriously impacted by this COVID-19 situation. And a lot of the companies here in our city, like for instance, like Tesla, their Fremont plant got shut down. You know, there are so many, can't really, really sell cars they can't make. So it's, it's a lot of the, certainly on the, smaller businesses have been seriously impacted, like because of the restaurants and, and the retail has absolutely been impacted. But even the larger tech companies have been impacted because it's, 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 if, let's say for instance, a restaurant doesn't need to advertise on Google anymore, as an example, right? And that impacts the tech company, right? And so it's, it's a chain reaction that happens that would trickle through the entire economy. So, and then a lot of the companies here in our city are actually surviving on, on investor capital, which if anyone is trying to raise money right now, it's pretty much impossible, right? It's very, very difficult to raise money in this environment. So I think what we need to do is we need to stimulate businesses, not, not enact a tax and tax makes even harder for them to recover. So I think staff's right on, on target for this. So I'd like to make a motion that in response to the current public health emergency, to discontinue development of a local business tax measure from November 2020 election, to focus staff work over the coming year on revisions to the city's existing business registry, certificate program with the specific goal of streamlining the process to register, ensuring all businesses are registered, improving the correctness of the registry and liability data. And then the third one is direct staff return with a railroad grade separation work plan that extends the target date for selection of preferred alternatives.
Thank you. So Councilmember Tanaka, just confirming, that's the, the recommended motion in the, the memorandum, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there's a motion by Councilmember Tanaka, seconded by Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Tanaka, allow you to speak to it, then Councilmember Niss, and then we'll go back in the order that we were, were going. So after Niss, Councilmember Koo.
So I, I think it's really critical that we try to get the economy back on solid footing. Right now, we're a basic standstill and whether we're talking about like a V-shaped recovery, where we bounce right back, or whether we have a long drawn out painful recovery, it's going to be determined by how we respond as a government. I think for us, to be responsible to our community, to our businesses, it's important that we do the right measures to actually help the economy recover so that people are not laid off, people don't lose their homes, people don't, you know, aren't, don't have extended unemployment. And we've, we've been fortunate that we've had this 10-year bull cycle. Right now, unfortunately, we have this interrupted and I hope that we can return to the center of economic vitality. But I think that depends on how we act as a city. So I think it's important that we take the right steps going forward to, to enable this. So I, I did have a couple of small amendments, but may first let my secondor talk about it and see, and then see what she thought, thinks about amendments after she speaks.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
Niss, you're muted. Niss, you're muted. Unmute yourself.
I have just heard from a member of the public that they cannot hear what we're saying. So if somebody could put the motion up on the screen, that would help. I'm not exactly sure what it is that the public is seeing or hearing. Thank you very much. So I would say there are two reasons why I'm supporting this, especially this evening. Anecdotally, as we drive around town and especially if you drive down University Avenue after it gets dark, it's really so sad to see, but such a visible indication of what's happening to our businesses in, in this community. Well, California Avenue, drive down El Camino, but less visible is what's happening in the research park. And it's clear that they have been having difficulty for a while, but what this does is, it kind of is that nail that is going to, I think, make it very difficult for the businesses there to continue, especially with our shelter in place rule. So secondly, we have already seen some of the indications that our, our income in the future is going to go down. The hotels have a very small occupancy now, if any. Some of them apparently are thinking of closing. And secondly, we've also seen what's happening with the sales tax. So this is a really tough time, I think, for, for this community. And I think if we weren't to do this tonight, I think some of them will just lose heart over trying to stay in business here in town. Adding a tax at this point is, is true insult to injury. Under the last directive, which is to return with a railroad grade separation work plan, I hope that can happen. I think I've heard you say, Ed, positively that you think that could happen, that, that's probably going to take a lot of, a lot of concentration on the, on the part of the, on the, on the part of the committee. And you might want to say something about that later, but that's my second and thank you, Councilmember Tanaka.
So personally, Niss, as my secondor, I wanted to see if you'd be willing to accept two small amendments. So the first one is on the business registration fee, whether we can look at waiving the registration fees. This would get more businesses willing to comply and we would get more businesses to actually, we'd get more, we'd get better data that way. And the second thing is, I've talked to a lot of small businesses and they're truly suffering. They're, they're basically, a lot of the, the small business owners are paying money out of their pocket to keep, you know, employees on payroll, to pay rent. I mean, it's really, really tough. So while it's not a large fee, I think it would be the right gesture to show that we are trying to support the businesses while they're going through this incredibly difficult time. So I was wondering whether you would accept that amendment?
Let me make sure I'm, I'm, I'm back on again. Hang on just a second.
We.
Niss, I just killed you.
We could hear you there for a moment, Councilmember Niss and Councilmember Tanaka. I think, I think you mentioned consider waiving the business registration fee.
Right, yeah. She has it on the, yeah, on the screen.
Are you hearing me or is it echoing?
We can hear you, but everyone who isn't speaking, please turn off your mics.
So I think waiving the business fee is a good idea, but I'd like to hear something from staff before we did that because there may be other reasons for having the fee than the actual money involved. It may encourage people to actually register. So if we could hear back from staff before, I'd say that.
Certainly. Perhaps just to comment on it, it's certainly not a revenue generator. The fee is effectively $50, $54, I think, at the, with all costs associated with it. So it is simply a method of defraying a bit of the cost. So the question of waiving it would perhaps just come down to what timeframe would the council want to establish? You know, there's typically registrations that happen throughout the year, although it's an annual cycle for the reregistration. So it's really not a financial issue. Not sure if there are any other dimensions that our Administrative Services Director Kylie Nosey might want to note.
So Councilmember, is Kylie on the phone or?
She's on the Zoom, so I think it could be turned on for the purposes of speech.
Just one additional piece of information for the council to consider in terms of time. We are currently in the registration period, actually. So we do have some remittances, and then we were also looking at extending that date to later on this year, probably sometime in June, to accommodate with the current situation. So timeframe comes in as a question here clearly.
Councilmember Niss, are you going to accept this amendment, or? Is that a no? Or a yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. By the way, Councilmember Niss, your video is off, so you may want to turn it back on, unless we can see you, but it's up to you. So the second amendment I'd like us to consider is that we ask staff to look at how do we stimulate or help the businesses in this downturn. So I think staff, so it's more of a, some work for staff to do to figure out how do we get the businesses to recover. So basically, most of the amendment would be like number four, which is that we ask staff to look at how we can stimulate the business in Palo Alto. Or support, stimulate or support. We have a couple of words to add.
Councilmember Niss, will you accept this letter D?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And just to clarify, I think we mixed signals. Letter C, did you want to accept that, or not?
Yes, I accepted that.
Okay. Councilmember Tanaka, are those all the comments and amendments?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So we've had Councilmember Niss. Next is Councilmember Koo.
I want to say thank you very much for the motion. I will support. I do take issue with how the process was in bringing this forward. So I just want to, you know, make sure that we adhere to process when we're doing this. I realize that earlier in the week that there was a memo to the business community, but the rest of the community was left out. So I would like to make sure that as we move forward with other decisions and other agenda items that the, that we do follow process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. And Mr. City Manager, do you know about the communications around this?
Yes, I think Councilmember Koo is referring to a notice that our office sent out to the business community so that they're aware of this recommendation coming forward. So it did not presuppose the council's decision, but given the, quite frankly, the level of angst that we knew was out there, that we wanted to communicate what we were doing on our end.
Thank you. But this was also on the city's website as of Thursday?
Yes, that's correct. It went out with a packet, late packet, as typically the case. So late Thursday, this was distributed through all of our channels.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, unmuting here. Can you guys hear me? There seems to be a lot of echo here.
We can hear you.
Okay. So first of all, yeah, I think there's so much uncertainty right now, heading into a potentially deep recession, there's not the preferred time to run around raising taxes. So I think that makes sense. But let me ask a couple of questions. I gather, so, I mean, the reason we're countenancing this at all is because we're going to have some significant expenses coming down the line in the next several years. And I gather that there's no indication that Caltrain electrification is likely to slow down, at least yet. Is that an accurate statement?
That is correct. We do know that Caltrain and its contractor have been continuing to work since the order has been put in place, because public works construction is a specific exemption.
So it seems likely that we're still going to need money along the timeframe that we've been projecting with respect to electrification. And given that other sources of funding, notably Measure B, are based on sales taxes, and you can imagine scenarios in which not all of that appears either, given the current economic climate. So it seems like we kind of need to keep a wary eye on how we're going to finance all So, let me ask, so I thought the staff did, and the consultants did, a really good job, and some really useful work, investigating and analyzing this and coming up with the proposals that are in the document. If we postpone this a couple of years, and revisit it in potentially 2022 or something like that, do we have to do all that work again, or can we build on what we've already got here?
Well, perhaps Kylie could respond more specifically, but in general terms, I would say we certainly do not need to do it all over again. The work, and in fact, the policy direction that the council has taken to this point to guide the analysis, I do believe is extremely helpful in having made the progress that we have made. The one benefit, I might note, if this proceeds as indicated, would be that the registry would allow us to have a better sense of the composition of businesses in town. I believe the consultants in our team have had to make some educated guesses based on information available, that we might be able to have a better estimate based upon actual data received through an improved registry.
Actually, just anticipated what was going to be my last question, which was, you know, looking at the data in the staff report, you know, how good is Matrix Consulting's employment data, and how's it compare with our business registry? And, you know, how, I mean, because it looked like exactly the kind of data that we'd like to get out of the business registry.
I think you hit it right on the head. And so that is very accurate in terms of what we would hope to be able to improve on over the course of, really, the next year or so.
Okay. Thank you, then. You know, again, I think the staff recommended the motion made by Councilmember Tanaka and Niss makes sense, but I think the problem does not go away. And we're going to need that money and, you know, potentially an even larger business tax in a couple of years, because we're still going to be on the hook unless we, unless the state comes in with high-speed rail money or something like that, we're still going to have expenses looming at us over the next several years that we're going to need to find a way to defend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Phil Seth, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so I support all the elements of the staff motion. I think, you know, the first point, removing consideration of the business tax this year, yeah, I think I was probably one of the biggest supporters of the business tax, but I agree that now is not the time. You know, every year, we brought it up. I think we've heard a lot of arguments opposing the tax. I think a lot of those were short-sighted, red herrings, but the reason today is valid. And as we've watched this virus escalate over the last month, it's become clear that the impacts are going to be felt for some time. So given the unprecedented uncertainty, I don't think we can move forward this year, and so I support that part of the motion. In terms of the business registry, I think we've known our registry has needed attention. I think the current crisis is motivating us to get it in shape. I do hope that this will also include data integrity checks. I think, you know, we've had businesses registering, but we've, you know, clearly seen data issues. And so I think the process itself is really important. Terms of the third issue, I mean, to me, I think the city manager said, I mean, the rail is somewhat of an independent issue from the business tax. We do need to get to our selected alternatives, independent of what we do with the business tax. And the direction we were heading with the tax was, it was going to be pretty small, would leave quite a gap for the grade sub we're looking at, which didn't even include Palo Alto Avenue. So we do need to delay from our April deadline, but I think we need to look at independent timelines for grade subalternatives and the tax. I think Councilmember Phil Seth was hitting on it, and if I heard the answer, I mean, I do hope we kind of archive this work, we can come back to it. I did have a question, some questions on the amendments. So the amendment to consider waiving the fee, that's really for staff to suggest whether or not we do so, and for how long? Is that, is that correct?
That was my intention. I mean, basically, there's a lot of small businesses where every fee that they're paying right now, they're really paying out of their pockets, because they're not gaining revenue. So it's really, really difficult for people.
Sure. Sure. And certainly, $50 for our small businesses makes sense. But let's see what staff comes back with in terms of for how long. I could see doing it for a year. The last amendment, I was actually going to propose something similar, and I'd actually like to see if there's interest in taking it a little bit further. I mean, I really think we should agendize a discussion of programs we could do to support local businesses at a near meeting, either our next meeting or the meeting after that. So, I mean, this is, just says, look at how we can stimulate business, but I do think there's some urgency to that.
I actually agree. Now, I'm happy to add that to this. So I don't know if that person could bring it on the screen and then add it to that. I don't know if the secondor would also accept, but I think it makes sense to add it.
I'm looking at Ed to see.
Well, maybe I'm just reeling from the thought of the next meeting, which would just be in two weeks. So clearly, there would be no real staff work between now and then to evaluate options. So if it were at your next meeting, it would be something of a brainstorming session to identify areas of focus. I suspect, you know, recognizing that the county health order will still be in place at that point in time, that much of the picture will still be coming into focus in terms of what impact businesses are experiencing. And so having a brainstorming session is certainly fine and could be helpful. It's just I'm not sure how far we'll be able to take it at that point in time, as both the state and federal assistance packages are coming together.
I mean, later tonight, we're talking about residential rental protections. I think in the week or two, we may see, you know, emergency ordinances related to businesses, particularly, you know, small retailers. And so I think if we could maybe think about agendizing some kind of discussion, it could be time-critical. You know, I'm really interested in, some of our oldest businesses have really been part of the community for a long time, and they've contributed for a long time. This could really, you know, hurt them and be the end of some of these businesses.
So just jumping in, I'll definitely commit to work with the city manager on that. It's been on my mind, too. But I do concur, we're still really early. And the other area I'll point out is, I think, this is something I've kind of harped on. I'm not sure the city has so much expertise in this, and it may behoove each of us on council and the community to actually go, you know, speak with the chamber, or go talk to, you know, the local restaurant, go speak with, you know, some of the shops. And then we may want it to be them coming to us in a way.
For sure. We've taken steps, right, with some of our utilities, and so there may be some things the city can do that could help. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Our last, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it starts with an echo and then it disappears. I will be supporting the motion. Obviously, we don't, we're just in a different place today, and the economic situation is really indescribably different. I do just want to say, though, that there is a scenario where if we continued and did do the work and put it on the ballot and it passed, that no business would pay this tax for 21 months or more. And so that's a legitimate line of inquiry. And while my answer is no, we shouldn't do that, I would understand if others feel that way. Not necessarily my colleagues, they've all spoken before me, but I just want to put that out there. I align myself entirely, I'd say 98%, with Councilmember Phil Seth and his remarks. That's exactly where I was headed. For me, this has always been about transportation, and specifically about Caltrain, and how we provide grade separations at the train crossings. And given the plummeting ridership of Caltrain, and the possibility that people may not commute or commute completely differently in the future, I don't know how great the need will be in the medium term. I do want to note the excellent work that the staff and the consultant did, and that traffic and transportation was the most highly rated use of any potential funds. But in the reality, this is a stochastic shock to our economy, and so I'll be supporting the motion. I am particularly interested in seeing the business registry finally, shall we say, get with the program. Having comprehensive, authoritative, and accurate data means that something positive will come from the suffer that we've put forward. And just, you know, a word to the business community, I know many of you are frankly frantic, and that's completely understandable. And we read all of your emails, I want to assure you of that. I know some people felt that they wouldn't be heard because they couldn't come here this evening. But we did read your emails, and we did hear you. We will be here for you. The only concern I have with this motion is in Part D. The word stimulate really suggests fiscal policy. I'd be very comfortable with support, but the word stimulate concerns me, so I'll ask the maker, as a friendly amendment, if he'd remove the word stimulate from Part D.
Beth, can you bring it to the screen, so we can see what it looks like? You know, people are talking about this being incredible recession, so I, I mean, the city has limited funds, so I don't think we're going to do a whole lot, but this is something for staff to look at, and they'll come back to us to see, to see how, like, what's feasible. So this just gives staff the ability to look at that scenario as well. So I guess, yeah, I guess I'd love to hear from the second and other members of the council on this, but to me, it seems like it's, this is more of a giving them the ability to, you know, have additional tools. So I don't know, I guess I would like to hear from other councilmembers first, before accepting.
So I'll just jump in. I think it seems reasonable. I mean, I think it could imply, you know, economic stimulus, but it could also be policy stimulus, or, you know, communications work on behalf of businesses. I think if staff does come back and find it's necessary to, you know, literally invest in some of our businesses, the council can consider that.
Adrian?
Sorry, it's hard for me to tell who is, I think that's Liz. Liz, you want to go? And I think I see Eric raising his hand, too.
And speaking to that one in particular, of how we stimulate and support the businesses, that may not have to be a monetary thing. It may be that there are other ways that we can do that. I think this is one of those times when we could look, perhaps, to the cities association to see what other cities are doing. Every one of us in this county is facing exactly the same problem, as well as Menlo Park and East Palo Alto. So it would be interesting to have that discussion with councilmember to councilmember, and not something that the staff has to be involved in. But I think this is a really good time to start poaching some ideas from other councils and see what they're going to do, because they equally have a number of businesses that support them well. So I'm supporting that one.
Councilmember Phil Seth, I think I saw you raise your hand.
Hey, did that work? I'm trying to unmute here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, thanks. So, you know, my reaction on that word was exactly the same as Councilmember Cormac's, which is, you know, you look at that word, and it sort of suggests a debt-financed Keynesian stimulus, which, you know, is so unrealistic for cities to ever do, that I thought, actually, it did no harm to have the word in there.
Interesting take. Councilmember Koo?
There's no need, but, you know, I've expressed how I feel about this. I think support is absolutely appropriate, and the word stimulate, for me, you know, I wouldn't want the business community to think that we're going to be making fiscal policy investments in, in businesses. I just wouldn't anyone vote to get the wrong idea.
Absurd was the word I was thinking of.
Well, words matter. Words matter. Councilmember Phil Seth. So, all right. With that, I'll conclude.
Thank you very much. Okay. I've just got a couple of quick comments. So I think, as, as we all know, this is really not a time to be taxing our businesses. I think it was, gosh, it was two, it was like 10, 12 days ago, I was actually at one of our larger employees, employers, talking to their government relations team about this business tax. And the next day is when it seems like, you know, everything fell out beneath us, and we immediately began reconsidering this, this whole effort. So I agree with this motion, we'll be supporting it. I think it is the time to, you know, look at supporting our businesses. I'll also note, you know, we don't actually have any businesses in the chamber tonight, and a number of them wrote us, but we really have been deterring attendance, and that also raises issues for potential tax. I think it's important to give staff the leeway to focus on other things, including how we are going to deal with our grade separations, which has become a little murkier in terms of the timeline. One issue about the business registry, we should go back and, and staff should as well go review the audit of, of the business registry. If I recall correctly, part of the critique there is that, or the audit found, it wasn't really clear what the purpose of the business registry is. And so I think, I think we need to answer that question pretty clearly before we embark on a new effort. To use a term I've heard, the business registry, registry kind of became a Christmas tree of all different kind of factoids and pieces of information people wanted about businesses, and we may need to, to narrow that scope to get, you know, good compliance and information in the business registry. But I think this is overall a good motion. If there are no other comments, should we vote virtually? How are we going to do this? Why don't you just raise your hands, and I'll just read off. Raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
City Attorney. You need to have a roll call vote.
Thanks, Molly. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. That's what I'm here for.
Absolutely. Keeping, keeping us honest. All right. So those of us in chamber, Vice Mayor, the boys, myself, I, and then let's go alphabetically, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Councilmember Niss.
I'm mute.
Liz, you're on mute, so how do you vote?
Sorry, yes.
Yes. Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously with five of us virtually voting and two of us here in chambers. Thank you all very much for that. Do you want to take five, or should we just keep on going? Okay, let's keep going. If any of you need to step away for a moment, please just feel free and just ping me in the chat, and we will do that. So next up, we have oral communications, where members of the public may speak to any item not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public? Okay, thank you. And now we move to our consent calendar items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 5A. I'll move consent. Thank you, Vice Mayor, I'll second it. And if there are comments, let's just go through, I'll just call on each of you, see if you have any comments about this. Councilmember Cormac.
Yeah.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
No, no issues, I vote yes.
Okay. Councilmember Niss.
No issues.
Councilmember Koo.
No issues.
Councilmember Tanaka.
No on 2, 5, and 5A.
So no on 2, 5, and 5A. Okay, now let's go through and actually vote. I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Okay. So that passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka voting no on 2, 5, and 5A. And Councilmember Tanaka, if you want to speak to those three.
Sure. So on 2, we're approving $2.3 million to be given to a third-party company to do parking enforcement. We heard the city manager earlier say that they're actually not enforcing parking right now. We have a lot of residents, a lot of businesses that are really suffering through this economic meltdown. And to me, it would be more responsible to use this $2.3 million instead of on parking enforcement, to be used it on perhaps deferring our utility fees. I realize we're doing some of that now, but we can only do that for so long without additional money. So to me, it would be more prudent to use this fund that we're using for parking enforcement for things where it really helps the people in our community. On 5, the problem with 5 is that it's assuming that we actually get an increase in development fees, and that's why the expenditures of development fees are also increasing. But with this economic meltdown, it's very, very uncertain that this increase is actually going to happen. And so I don't think it makes sense to actually increase the budget as well as the expenses, because I don't think that the revenue increase is actually going to happen. I think it's not realistic. Then on 5A, 5A basically is, you know, kind of case of the 2021, or 2020 budget, fiscal year 2020 budget, and using it as the plan for 2021. I do agree with the idea of streamlining the process and making, allowing staff to focus really on what matters. So that part makes sense to me. But the part that doesn't make sense to me is to use the 2020 budget as, as the budget for 2021. That makes no sense. We have revenues that are collapsing, our sales tax, our hotel tax, and probably even our property tax. The 2020 budget had assumptions that our sales tax was going to go up, that our hotel tax was going to go up, that our property tax was going to go up. And I don't, I think even for our 2020 budget, we should actually have a downward forecast, and we should be making adjustments right now to our 2020 budget. And to use the 2020 budget for our 2021 budget, which, you know, I think the 2020 budget's already wrong, and to use that for the 2021 budget makes no sense to me. I think the other problem is that, you know, given, given what's been happening, what we really need to is re-prioritize where our resources are going, our staff's time, our staff's, our, our city's money. And, and I think, I think more funds should be going to things like fee relief versus, you know, hiring a third-party company to, you know, spending $2.3 million where we're not going to do parking enforcement, on a, parking enforcement could be, this, this doesn't make sense. I don't understand why we would do this. So I, I'm, you know, I realize on the finance committee, we're going to be looking at this more closely, but to just go on autopilot budget, to use the same exact budget that we have for 2020 makes no sense to me. It just seems like the wrong thing to be doing right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. We now move to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Perhaps just, my only comment since we've been so focused on the COVID-19 response that we don't have routine comments. I would just like to note for the record that a couple of factual items related to your consent calendar. First, that the CERCO contract is a three-year agreement that otherwise expires at the end of this month. So we have had a reduction in expenses accordingly, given that we're not currently doing, are not issuing citations. And so this contract simply positions us to be able to move when the emergency is over. And in the absence of that, we would not have a mechanism to implement the program for the residential permit parking. Number five is, is stated in the report, a very straightforward, no revenue, no expenditure. So, or if there were no revenue, there would be no expenditure, so there's no budgetary issue associated with number five. And number 5A, I think we mentioned earlier, but it's effectively reflecting that the document that the council will receive will be a placeholder budget and not presume any policy actions, or not preclude any policy actions by the council in the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We now move on to action items. Do I need to make any motions on 6 and 7 being delayed to another date?
I don't believe so, given that the revised agenda is correctly reflecting that those will not be heard this evening.
Okay, thank you. So our one action item of the night is item number eight, three parts, adoption of an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on residential tenant evictions, and discussion and direction on extending that eviction's moratorium to businesses, nonprofits, and other commercial tenants. Does staff have a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Molly Stumpf, the City Attorney. We do have a presentation, but before we get started, I think Councilmember Niss has an announcement.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to make sure.
Councilmember Niss, can you repeat that, please? We didn't hear you. And I think you're on mute. Liz, you're, you're still, you're still on mute.
How are we doing now?
Okay, now, now if you could please proceed.
Now, it echoes badly, I'm sorry. I can hear it in the background. I have, on previous items like this, recused myself because we own property, rental property in Palo Alto. So given that I have done this before, and set a precedent during that, I'm going to recuse myself tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. City Attorney Stumpf, back to you.
Thank you very much. So before we get started, I have a housekeeping item. This is a rapidly moving issue, as all of the COVID-19 items seem to be. And we have some, a couple, two minor changes to the ordinance that is before the council and was published to the public. And the two changes are as follows. First of all, the end date of the ordinance is, in the draft you have, is pegged to the county's, hang on, just one second, to the county declaration of a local public health emergency. We recommend changing that to peg the end date of the ordinance to the city council's declaration or proclamation of a local emergency, which just gives the city a little bit more control over when the eviction protection ordinance would expire. And the second change is, the ordinance provides that landlords would be prohibited from assessing any late fees to tenants who took advantage of the protections of the eviction protection ordinance. Just to make it abundantly clear what is meant by that, we recommend adding two more words, and that is interest or penalty. So it would say landlords may not charge or collect interest, a late fee, or penalty for rent that is delayed for reasons protected in the ordinance. The clerk has copies of those two changes, and I recommend that if the council adopts the two ordinances this evening, that we adopt them with those two changes. If there are no questions about that, I have a short PowerPoint, and we can walk through what the ordinance says, and also update what's going on with the state. Mr. Mayor, it looks like Councilmember Cormac has a question.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you so much. Attorney Stumpf, I think the second thing you mentioned is in Section 6, page 4. Is that where the interest or penalty would be added?
Section 6, paragraph A, that's correct.
Okay. And then where was the prior part, the date?
Okay, so it's slightly different in the two ordinances. Looking at the regular ordinance, the date change will appear in two places. It will appear in Section 6, paragraph A, which currently refers to the local public health emergency declared by the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, and we recommend changing that to the proclamation of local emergency ratified by the city council. And the date changes. The Board, County Board of Supervisors acted on February 10, and we acted on March 23.
Okay. Thank you so much, that's helpful.
And the second place that it occurs is in Section 10, which is the effective date. It currently says it will remain in effect until the 121st day after the Santa Clara County proclamation, and we would change that as well to the city council ratification of the state of local emergency.
Okay, I see thumbs up from Councilmember Cormac. Did I see a question from Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Molly, so when you change the date, it's not going to end right when the emergency is removed, right?
So.
It'll give, it'll give the tenant some time to recover?
Where it's, what, the way it's currently drafted is 121 days after the city concludes its local emergency, which we have control over that time, but we do have a responsibility to conclude the local emergency when the emergency has passed. I would also say that this is an item where, you know, I think we all know we're in an uncertain world, and how long these protections would need to be in place, you know, is subject to change. So what we would recommend for tonight is the 120 days after the end of the emergency, but that's a timeline that council can come back and change, one would think, by extending it. And you can do that in the coming weeks or months. So that, that's something that you will be able to revisit if you, it seems that a longer period of time is needed.
Thank you for the thoughtfulness. Also, can you go over housekeeping about votes on this?
Yes. So there are two ordinances before you. There's an urgency ordinance, which if passed, will go into effect immediately. That means tonight. It requires a four-fifths vote of six, which is five council members voting yes. Also before you is a regular ordinance, which goes into effect 30, 31 days after the second reading. So the second reading would probably occur on the 6th of April, and it would be 31 days after that. That requires a simple majority of the full council, which is four votes.
Thank you.
So council members? Yes, I have a short PowerPoint, but maybe there are more questions on this part. Uh-oh.
I'll wait till after the PowerPoint.
Okay, I lost you all for a minute, but I'm back. Phew. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, are you ready? Okay, great. All right, so here we're starting, very short PowerPoint. So just last week, one week ago today, the governor, California governor issued in an executive order, suspension of state preemption of the normal rules that govern this area of law, which allowed local governments to then respond and provide some eviction protections to their residents. And the governor's executive order applied to both residential and commercial tenants affected by COVID-19 income loss. Just one second, thank you. The state legislature since then has announced that they are considering some statewide protections. The state legislature is in recess until the 13th of April, but we have some indications that there are several bills that, that are likely to come forward at the state level that would provide for a uniform approach throughout the state. Very tentative, there's no language that's available yet on these, but what we're hearing is that Assemblymember Ting is looking to define a moratorium period and provide a framework for protect, for repayment that may affect both evictions and foreclosures, and would provide for structured repayment plans and potentially payment recovery to go all the way through 2021. We have also heard that. We have also heard that Senator Scott Weiner is interested in a bill that would address commercial eviction issues. So that's very tentative, and we'll have to see how that goes. In the meantime, the governor's office has indicated that what has happened, both before the executive order and then after the executive order went into place, is that there's been a patchwork of approaches from cities and counties, and that the governor's office is monitoring those developments, and is expecting to issue what's been called stronger protections of some sort, we don't know what, even as soon as this week. So there, it seems there's likely to be more developments at the state level. Depending on how those state-level laws or rules are phrased, they could override any city action, or they could allow for additional protections at the city level. So we'll just have to watch for that as we go forward. We can talk a little bit, if people are interested, about what other cities are doing and about mortgage foreclosures. Madam Court, could you switch to the next slide? So what we see is that... There we go. Cities and counties are taking action. Some started even before the governor issued the executive order, and then since then, last week, we saw some additional action. And a few cities have expanded their efforts to cover commercial tenants, although we have not seen language from that from any city yet. We have seen an announcement of city policy from strong mayors. And then, of course, we've read in the news that the federal government is taking some action, but that's limited to foreclosures, which is eviction protection essentially for homeowners, and it does not apply to renters. Madam Court, can you switch to the third slide? So the proposed ordinance before you prohibits residential evictions for non-payment of rent due to income loss related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The ordinance defines income loss related to COVID-19 very broadly. So it could be anything from a reduction in hours, a loss of a job, reduction in an income from business, illness of yourself or family member, need to stay home because you fall under those categories under the state order, or because you have minor children who are home who you must care for. So the tenant, the ordinance says that the tenant must provide notice in writing to the landlord and supporting documentation, but these are as user-friendly for the tenant as possible. If the written notice is sufficient, if it's an email or a text, if that's the way the tenant has in the past communicated with their landlord or the landlord's representative. Supporting documentation is, there are some examples in the ordinance, such as a letter or a notice from an employer, bank statements or pay stubs, but other documentation that is sufficient to confirm that there have been some income loss is also sufficient. The ordinance provides that the tenant is still responsible for unpaid rent, unless the landlord says otherwise, of course, and that this is the 120 days, so that the rent needs to be brought current 120 days after the end of the local state of emergency in order for the tenant to be protected from eviction. Again, unless some other arrangement is made with the landlord, and this period of time could be revisited and changed by council in the future. And again, the ordinance prohibits late fees, which includes interest or any kind of penalties. No other provisions of the leases, though, are overridden by our ordinance. Okay, so what we're looking for today, then, on these two, is adoption of the urgency ordinance, if council wishes to do that, and adoption of the regular ordinance at the same time. And then if, Clerk, if you would go to the fourth slide. This is the additional piece of business, if council wishes to have a discussion about extending our efforts to commercial evictions. We are interested in some high-level policy direction from council on what you would like us to work on. I noted that Councilmember Phil Seth reported that he had not heard of any imminent concerns from commercial businesses, that they were seeing eviction notices or pressures, and that's a good thing, that also makes sense to us, both in terms of the practical realities of the situation and the fact that evictions do, if they are desired by the landlord, they do take a period of time, and our court system is essentially on hold on these types of things at the moment. But if this is an area council wants us to work on, you can talk about, at a conceptual level, what you would like us to bring forward as options for further consideration. In the alternative, we could pause for a week or two. We have lots of other urgent pandemic-related items to work on, and we could see what comes out at the state level. So either way, we can start working on something with the knowledge that the state may override our efforts and preempt that, or we can pause and come back for further direction, or to check in with council and receive further direction at your next meeting. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Molly, thank you very much. Let's go to my council colleagues. This time, we're going to go in regular alphabetical order, which means Councilmember Cormac, you are first.
Thank you so much, Mayor Fine. Thank you to the city attorney for bringing this forward so quickly amidst everything that's going on. Is the mayor looking for motions at this time?
If you so like.
Okay. I'd be happy to go ahead and move the staff motion of A and B. Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay, so you're moving parts A and B?
Yes, and then with respect to C, I think we received some very helpful information earlier in the evening on item one. And we actually, in addition to the comments that Councilmember Phil Seth made earlier, at least one email received today, is from a small business who is concerned about their ability to pay rent within the next two months. So I think it would be appropriate, recognizing that, you know, hopefully the state will step forward and make things appropriate across all of our communities, that we have staff work on a similar ordinance for small businesses. And I'm going to just suggest fewer than 20 employees by the time being, and we go through there. Sorry, go ahead.
I would second the motion.
Okay, so you're doing letters A and B, and then C, potentially based on businesses with less than...
Asking, yes, mhm. Just as a straw man for staff to work with over these next two weeks, ask them to be prepared to bring forward a similar moratorium to protect small businesses.
Okay, great, thank you. And I heard a second...
And I'm just going to say businesses and organizations, just to cover the nonprofits.
Excellent, thank you. And I heard a second from the vice mayor. Do you care to speak to your motion?
Briefly. I think, you know, the most concerning thing in the staff report is the part that says more severe economic impacts are anticipated in the coming weeks. And, you know, we absolutely need to get ahead of that and help as much as we can. So again, grateful to the staff for bringing this forward so quickly. I just want to make two comments further. I particularly appreciate on page five, the avoiding inconsistencies part, so that the city manager will be in a position to fix things where there are conflicts with either state or potentially even federal legislation going forward, or decrees. And then finally, I do just want to acknowledge that while this is the right thing to do this evening, there will likely be some unintended consequences. There are some people who rely on rental income for their own income. It is not clear that banks are going to be as forgiving as we would all hope. So I think we'll need to pay attention to this as we go forward. And given how much has changed in the past week, when we look at part C two weeks from now, who knows where we'll be, but I'd like staff to be working on something in parallel going forward. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, so first of all, thanks, thank you to our legal staff for bringing this so quickly, and for the additions of no penalties and clearer language on the timeframe. And I do think it's, it was an important caveat that our city attorney put out there, that we may need to revisit the 120 days, we'll see how things go. If this lasts a very long time, 120 days could be a very short time period to catch up on missing rent. I do want to share that I heard a representative from Fannie Mae talk about the mortgage forbearance policy that they put in place. And it applies to Fannie Mae, Fannie Mac, but it also applies to any lenders they work with, which is pretty much most lenders out there. And so if you're impacted, if you've lost your job, you should contact your mortgage lender. And if you're a two couple, two-income household, and one person's lost a job, basically you work with your mortgage lender, and you can reduce your payments in negotiated fashion up to 100%. There are no late fees, no payments for up to 12 months. And the person from Fannie Mae was also very clear that if renters should talk to their landlords, this would apply to landlords as well. If the landlords are dependent on the rent, they can go to their mortgage company and get forbearance. So it is, I think it's an important point, and people should watch those mortgage policies. The last point on the addition, you know, 20 employees, very specific number. Councilmember Cormac, were you basing that number on anything, or can we make it a little more flexible?
I was, I was basing it on item one from earlier in the evening, and the extensive information on packet page seven.
Okay, yeah, I saw that, so. And then...
I mean, we could go up to 50, but I guess if I think about the kinds of organizations, they're more likely to be in the size. We could give staff a little flexibility if you'd be more comfortable.
Yeah, maybe just a little. I know there's some restaurants that maybe are less than 50, but more than 20. Yeah, but also during the business tax discussion, we asked staff to think about support for businesses. I wondered if this can be basically part of that same discussion.
I'm still most comfortable keeping it to small businesses and nonprofit organizations?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. So are you comfortable with 50, is that what you want?
Yep. So could we just delete the number and let staff make a recommendation, suggest small businesses and nonprofits, period?
Certainly, accepted.
Okay. But again, I know, Ed, you weren't committing necessarily to come back on for a business discussion, but maybe this could all be part of the same package, whether it's two or three weeks for now. So I hope everybody will support this.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have Councilmember Phil Seth, then Koo, then Tanaka.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so thanks very much, and yeah, I think this makes sense. I think there's a clear need, especially on the residential side. On the business side, you know, I didn't really talk to, you know, hundreds of companies. And so my takeaway was that, you know, it's probably less likely, but not impossible. And so just that the urgency was probably higher on the residential side than the business side. So I think it makes sense to proceed. The Councilmember Cormac pointed out, you know, you always worry about unintended consequences when you try to start regulating this kind of thing. And so I guess I wonder, is, should we worry about, you know, unintendedly declaring a six-month rent holiday on everybody? Because, you know, the documentation needed to demonstrate that you've been affected by COVID seems pretty broad. And then the onus falls on the landlord to show that it's not true, which is an impossible thing. And so I just want to make sure that we're not inadvertently doing something that's going to hurt small landlords as well, since it's a relatively long time. But I don't know if that's an issue or not. I guess I'd like to hear from legal, what do you guys think?
So if I can start, because of the really fast way that we've brought this forward, the city staff has not had an opportunity to do the outreach to stakeholders that ideally we would like to do, in order to bring you a full assessment of the practical implications of what you're looking at. I would say, however, that the ordinance doesn't relieve tenants of the obligation to pay their rent. It merely says if they don't do so during the emergency, they will not be evicted for that. But afterwards, there is a requirement to honor the contractual arrangement with the landlord and come current on rent. Now, you, you know, you might ask yourself about the practicalities of that, depending on how bad things get, and how many months this goes on, et cetera. So there may be, in the future, actions at a higher level of government or individual contractual renegotiations between tenants and landlords to try to address some of those tremendous issues. Because obviously, for folks who are living paycheck to paycheck, you know, before the epidemic, you know, paying two months' rent in a month instead of one month's rent, when one month was difficult, you know, you can ask how practical, you know, how likely it is that that will occur. So these are all unknowns. And I don't know if the city manager has anything more to add?
No, nothing to add.
But basically, the recourse, then, is if we get out three months, four months, and you know, it looks like, you know, we need to course correct, then we still have mechanism that if it should become necessary.
Yes, you do, unless action is taken at the state level that...
Right, of course. Okay. All right, well, hopefully, hopefully none of that will materialize, and this will protect people. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo?
So thank you, Molly, for bringing this forward so quickly and so thoroughly. Really appreciate this. There's a lot of people hurting, and really concerned, and this will help with their anxiety and stress levels, so bring back some mental stability to their lives. And I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Cormac and Vice Mayor DuBois for moving this forward also. I also appreciate item C, that we kind of extended out and let the staff, Molly's staff, kind of look through this. I know a few businesses in town, especially restaurants, there is one in particular that owns two or three of the restaurants in town, and I don't know how it's, how that would be calculated, if all of his restaurant is consolidated and the staff members added as one or each separately. So I think that we want to be cautious when we're just limiting it to a number of employees. So I want to say thank you very much again, and I will support this.
Thank you. And Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I just also want to thank staff for bringing this forward. I think that during this crisis, we want to make sure that people have some stability, and we don't want people on the street, I think, and make the problem worse. So in general, I think this makes sense. So I have a few questions for you guys. So I guess maybe, Councilmember DuBois, do you know if what you talked about for the mortgage holders, does it apply to all mortgage holders, or just people who have the mortgage through Fannie Mae?
So again, if you look at the Fannie Mae website, you have to demonstrate an impact from the COVID-19.
No, no. Sorry, I guess my question is, do all mortgage holders have, so Fannie Mae looks like they're giving some leniency for non-payment of mortgages, but does that apply? Is it just Fannie Mae, or like, if you have your mortgage...
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm not a attorney, but I play one on TV. What the Fannie Mae representative said was that all major banks work with them, and if they work with them... Mae representative said was that all major banks work with them, and if they work with them, they have to abide by these rules, and they expected it to apply pretty broadly, but beyond that.
Even if you don't get your mortgage through Fannie Mae, it still applies? Or if it's not connected with Fannie Mae, it still applies?
That's what they were suggesting, but it's all changing rapidly. So I would verify that.
Okay. Well, I, I guess to me, that's, that's kind of a very important question because I can imagine that kind of what Councilmember Phil Seth was saying earlier, if you're a small-time landlord and you have to pay a mortgage, right? So a lot of people think property owners are very rich or landlords are very rich. And some of them are, but a lot of them have a mortgage, right? They actually don't own the house, the bank does, and they're paying basically, you know, the mortgage every month. And, and so for me, it would be really important to know, like, what kind of chain reaction do we, do we create by saying that, hey, their interest doesn't pay rent, but then does that make all these small-time landlords go and solve it, right? Do they, does it ruin their credit score? Does it, do they rack up penalties? Like, what happens to them? I mean, are they out on the street? So that's something I, to me, is kind of important. If, if all mortgages are going to be, are going to have a backstop where they're not going to be able to, you know, throw, throw or totally ruin the mortgage holder, then that's probably okay. But I'm, I'm worried about the chain reaction that happens as this ripples through the economy. Because what happened, what's, what's essentially doing is saying, we're putting this economic burden from the renters to the landlords, which the vast majority of them actually don't own the property. The bank owns the property, right? And so if the bank doesn't give them relief, then the, these, these small-time landlords are going to be in a world of hurt. So I think, I, I would like staff to actually look at this more closely to understand what is the ramification of, as we, as we transfer the risk from the tenants to the, to the, to the landlords, who the vast majority have mortgages, what happens to them as they're not able to pay their mortgage? Because I can imagine if, if multiple tenants come in and say, hey, we can't pay rent, it could totally, I mean, I know a lot of, and then I think this, this predominantly affects especially a lot of the senior members of the community who may be living on rent. I know, like, my neighbor across the street, she, she depends on her rental income. And, and so I, I do wonder, like, I do wonder about the unintended consequences. Like, how will she be able to survive, right? She's pretty old, you know, I mean, this is her only, her rental income is the only source of income, right? So I wonder, like, how do those people, I mean, she, I don't think she has a mortgage anymore. I don't know. But I'm just wondering, how, how do people like her survive now they're not going to get rent, right? What would happen to them? How do they buy food? Like, do they have to reverse mortgage? Like, what, what happens to them? So I, I just wonder, when we do this protection, what happens to the people downstream? Because I think in general, this is the right thing, but I'm just wondering, how does it affect everyone else in the economic system here?
This is Molly. So there, there's no question that there are trade-offs. In terms of the mortgage protection, I, my, our information is the same as what Councilmember DuBois just mentioned, which is that what the federal government has done is likely to ripple through the system and be widely available. But I think we don't have concrete detail on that or confirmation of it today. I think when we come back on the 6th of April, we will have more information. So maybe what, if there is additional information or we're ready on the commercial piece on April 6th, when we come back for second reading, we can make this an action item and, and do a more complete report for council.
Well, I think commercial piece is one, is another thing. But what I worry about is there are people who really depend on rent. And I, again, I mean, a lot of our older members of the community really depend on rent for their own survival. And I'm just worrying, I mean, and all these people only have like one or two units. They're not like big-time landlords. What, like, how, how do we take care of them? How do we make sure that they're not displaced? Like, they're not starving. How do we, how do we ensure that as we take money away from them and give it to the tenants? So I, I, I think that's something we should think about, the unintended consequences. Because maybe today we help the tenants, but then we're, we're taking the money away from these small-time landlords. So maybe there should be something in here about, you know, if excluding, like, if the landlord only has like one unit or a couple of units, right? I mean, I, I can imagine that can be really devastating for, for a landlord, especially one that has a mortgage or one that has no other source of income. So I, I, I'm a bit concerned about that. So I, I don't know if there's a way for us to, to, uh, have some sort of exclusion, or if, let's say, you have four units and all four of your tenants say, oh, we need, we need a, we need a break on our rent. I mean, that could destroy a landlord who has to pay a mortgage on this fourplex or duplex or whatever, right? Or they're paying on for their own survival. So how, how do we make sure that they're okay too? Molly, how do, how do you think you could figure this out? Like, how do we make sure that we're not, by, by taking money away from the landlords and give it to the tenants, how do we make sure that our small-time landlords aren't going to be economically damaged?
Okay, so several points. So the, the ordinance doesn't relieve tenants of the obligation to pay rent, and any tenant who can pay their rent or part of their rent should do so. It's less of a hole you have to dig yourself out of later. Second point, you're absolutely right, there are trade-offs, and these are policy questions for the council, and they're difficult. You know, what I'm reading, some economists are saying we're heading into a depression. So, you know, how you balance that or quote unquote, take care of everyone, these are going to be very difficult issues that all levels of government and all of our institutions are going to be grappling with in the months ahead. And I don't have any, I'm sorry, but I don't have any answers for you this evening.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, that's what I'm, I'm trying to balance as well. Because I think, I do think something like this is needed, but I'm just worried that now landlords aren't, don't have a backstop, right? I mean, I think, I really think about my neighbor across the street who depends on his rental income.
So, so Councilmember Tanaka, I, what I, what I would urge you, if, if council wants to spend more time thinking about this before taking any action, we can certainly do that. What I wouldn't do, at least tonight, is to make a distinction based on the structure of the business or the size of the business of the landlord. We, we would need to look at that, whether that, that is an appropriate distinction to make. I understand why you raised the issue, but I don't, we wouldn't be prepared to make that change in the ordinance tonight.
Yeah, it's a complex issue. It's, it's the next step, right? So I, I think we need like a, a D here, that, like a part D that talks about how do we, how do we, how do we take care of our small-time landlords, right? I mean, I, I can imagine, so like, this measure could destroy a few people, right? More than a few people. And I think, especially our older members of the community. And I, and I don't think that's what we're intending to do. So, so I guess direct staff to look at how do we protect or take care of our, I don't know if it's called small, small-time landlords. I guess that's a good word, good word of saying it. Because I, I think that, well, let me put that on the table first and see if--
Sure, sure.
Sure. So there's a amendment from Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Cormac, will you accept that?
I don't think so. And the reason has to do with what I said before and a little bit of what the city attorney was referring to. I'm really hoping that echo goes away soon. Okay. This is a trade-off. And if, if we were to follow Councilmember Tanaka's line of reasoning out, it would say that if you only had a few number of places that you rented, that person who is renting from you would not have the protection that we are, that we are intending to give to everyone. I, I guess I'll ask our city attorney, have you ever seen anything like this in any other community that was able to be managed, this level of detail?
Thank you. I haven't, we haven't seen this type of distinction in the, any of the eviction moratoria, residential eviction moratoria that cities are putting into place for this health emergency. No.
Okay, thank you.
And I would want to, I would want to research whether it's even worth doing that.
And, and I, I share your concern, Councilmember Tanaka, but I think our task tonight is to protect the people who, like so many people in this country, only have $400 to, to deal with that emergency. And this is an emergency. So I'm, I'm, I'm not willing to accept that. I'll pause here and see if Councilmember, Vice Mayor DuBois has any thoughts to share as my seconder.
I have one further comment that might be helpful. When the governor allowed cities to take this type of action, his first justification was based on health. The idea was that for anyone who's currently housed, to become unhoused right now is a critical health issue. The second consideration is an economic one. Obviously, there are critical economic impacts for both landlords and tenants in the current environment. But the paramount issue that the governor was encouraging or allowing cities and counties to take action on was the critical health issue of keeping people housed in the immediate term.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with both what the city attorney said and, and Councilmember Cormac. I think it's a health and safety issue. And again, I, I did send you a link, Councilmember Tanaka. I believe that mortgage forbearance is available and will become more broadly available. And again, can I say with uncertainty, it's at 100% of cases? No, but it looks very broad-reaching for multifamily apartments, single-family homes, either resided in or rented out.
Thank you. So Councilmember Tanaka, back to you. I'll just note, we have, actually, I think I'm the last speaker after you.
Okay. So I guess what is the plan then to take care of these small-time landlords? Because I do agree, we don't want people on the street. I think that help definitely takes precedence. But how do we make sure that our, our small landlords aren't going to be incredibly damaged by this? What is, what is the, I don't know if staff has a plan for that, or is this going to come up later? Or do you guys have a way of addressing this?
So I think, I think staff has answered that in saying, you know, on, on the balance, that there certainly is an issue we can be aware of with small-time landlords, as you've raised. But as our city attorney just mentioned, this is largely an issue of health and safety for those who may be out of a home in the short term. And it's really a measure to protect them, their health and safety first, and their economic interests second. And we are weighing those more heavily in this case.
Well, okay, I, yeah, I mean, let's, so let me relax and second it. I'm going to move on. So the second question is on question 6B, and this is from Molly. So on 6B, can there be evictions after this? I mean, so, so right now, we have this protection, but after the, I assume, this is what it says, but the language is not clear, that evictions could happen if they don't pay rent and the emergency has ended. Is that right?
So when you say 6B, oh, hang on.
6B of the document I got sent. I'm not sure--
My, I'm, all right. 6B of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Just one moment. Yes, that's what that means. If 120 days elapsed, a tenant has not concur on all of the back rent, they are not protected from eviction.
Okay. And then, and I think you mentioned earlier that if the state does pass some sort of ordinance, it would preempt ours?
It depends on how, what the state says. They have the power to preempt. They may choose to do that, or they may choose to allow cities to take a more protective stance and go further than the state. And the state has taken both approaches on these types of issues in the past. So we have to wait and see what they do.
Okay. So I, I guess I'm, I'm hoping members of the public are, are watching this or will read about this. But I think we're trying to do the right thing here by making sure that our tenants aren't on the street, which I think, given the COVID-19 situation, we have to. But what I'm also hoping is that, that small landlords out there, you'll write in and talk about, or express any concerns that they may have, so that council can also make sure that you guys are taken care of. Maybe it's, we, we give a loan to those people so they could kind of tie their ways, tie their, their way through, or there's some other ways, some other mechanism that we could take that would help these landlords. Because I, I do feel for those small-time landlords out there that would be dramatically impacted by this. And I think it's important that we share their perspective as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. And I think it now turns to me. So just want to thank the city attorney for putting this together on such short notice. We really appreciate it. And urgency is important in this case, I think, as we've talked about. One or two quick questions. This does not cover no-fault evictions. Is that right? Neither of these. Okay.
That's it. I know there's some advocates who asked us to look at broader protection, and we're going to continue to do that in the coming two, and we may come back with a minor amendment to the regular ordinance on second reading in April.
Okay. And it also doesn't cover non-payment of rent. It's just, you have to demonstrate loss of income due to COVID-19?
Correct. It doesn't cover non-payment of rent for other reasons.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to raise those two things. We have seen those from some activists, you know, essentially trying to widen this moratorium to more categories. I, I think this is narrow enough to cover what we're trying to prevent for. I'll be honest, we've received a lot of emails on this in the past few days to, to council of, of members of the community supporting it. I'm not sure any of them will actually be protected by this, though. And so that, that was interesting to me. I think those mainly from, you know, homeowners who are supportive of this initiative to prevent, you know, renters from being evicted from their homes due to this, this coronavirus. So I just want to put that out there, that we haven't yet, at least I personally haven't heard from anybody who is in this situation, where due to a loss of income from this virus, they are being evicted. That said, I think it's a reasonable protection. I think Councilmember Tanaka raises some good questions about the impact on, you know, small-time landlords. But on the whole, I think this is the right thing to do. With that, I think we are ready to vote. So I'm just going to go myself, yes. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Councilmember Niss has recused herself. Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So that passes six to zero with Councilmember Niss recused. And I believe that completes that item.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, city attorney. Last item is Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements. I'm just going to go alphabetically. Councilmember Cormac?
Just a reminder that everybody should wash their hands.
Thank you. Vice Mayor DuBois?
Support your local businesses.
These are good messages. Everybody's got to come up to one. Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yeah, I saw that a, a coalition of national chain-wide restaurants has gotten together and declared tomorrow to be Take Out Food Day in, in America. So take out some food from Palo Alto Restaurants.
Nice. I don't believe we're having Councilmember Niss rejoin us. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Koo?
Magical Bridge. They're asked to do concerts from 12 to 1. It's on Facebook.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, even though we're not meeting in person anymore, I continue to have my off hours every Sunday, two to four. Anyone interested, welcome to zoom in with me. Again, I'm, I'm interested in hearing from landlords, businesses in terms of impacts, what we can do as a city to help you guys. I, I hope that we can make this a speedy economic recovery as we get through this, this COVID-19 disaster. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And I guess my one comment is, you know, do get outside and enjoy some fresh air, practice social distancing. One thing I've been pretty happy about the past few days is seeing all the dogs of Palo Alto are getting a lot more exercise and really getting out there. And so that, that was nice. And with that, I believe we're going to adjourn our meeting, and I would just like to adjourn it in a spirit of healing for any residents and their families suffering from this pandemic. So with that, we're adjourned. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much.